Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Vice Mayor Jones?
Here.
Dr. Miller? Mr. Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
We now have our invocation by J. Lee Vogler, Councilman Vogler. Please stand and for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we come to you tonight thankful for all the blessings that we have in life, thankful for the opportunity to spend time with those that we love and those we care about, thankful for the opportunity to do our best to help other people and to lift them up and to lift our city up and to do what is pleasing to you. We are thankful for the wonderful people that you bring into our lives and the time that we've had with them and a special thank you for a person that you allowed to be in my life that is now back with you and I just want to thank you for that and for all the blessings that you bestow upon us and our city. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Honorable Mayor John Gilstrap and our City Councilman and former Mayor Sherman Saunders is not with us tonight. Many of us wish that we were where they are, but we'll carry on just as such. We'll have communications from our visitors. Any citizen that wishes to speak on any agenda item that is not on the agenda, please feel free to speak. Any citizen who would like to desire to speak on items listed, not listed on the agenda, will be heard at this time. Thank you. To consent agenda, we may ask approval. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Campbell?
So moved to settle.
Second.
Shanks.
Second by Councilman Shanks. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap? Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Appointments yield to Councilman Buckner.
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor Jones. Consideration of appointments to the following boards and commission. Our board met last meeting and discussed this and we came up with a resolution appointing Kendall Carlson as a member of the Airport Commission, a resolution reappointing Sean Davis as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review, a resolution reappointing Susan Stillwell as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review, a resolution reappointing Michael Nichols as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review, a resolution reappointing Robert Ware as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review, a resolution reappointing Gary Wasson as a member of the Commission, I'm sorry, the Community Improvement Council, a resolution appointing Deborah Hairston as a member of the Community Improvement Council, and a resolution appointing Angela Fowler as a member of the Danville Pitts Manning County Community Services Board.
We get a second, please. Councilman Shanks. Discussion of the motion?
Sure.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap? Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Consideration of approval of an ordinance amending Chapter forty-one entitled "Zoning Ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia," I open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this matter, please come forward now. I close the public, I'm sorry. State your name and address, please speaking to the microphone and will just share with us, please.
My name is Karen Tickleley-Berhan and I'm here at Rasta House that's on one twenty-four Broad Street. It was a bed and breakfast and first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present my proposal, but I'm here because I like to, I currently have a license to have it as a bed and breakfast, but I'd like to also use it for small venues such as baby showers, bridal showers, retirement parties, things of that nature. So, that's all that I have.
Well, may I ask the city manager, is there possibility she can meet with you afterwards and give more details?
That might very well be the next item.
Next item on the agenda?
This is the code amendments for the distillery. I think she might be the next item on the agenda.
They're together, they're grouped together.
They're together.
Oh, they are?
Yes, they're both advertised together. The first part of it you'll see is the amendment to the definition of bed and breakfast. The second portion is the actual definition for a distillery and the locations. They're both zoning code changed and ran them together.
So, Mr. Gilley, we understand exactly what she's asking. Can you all meet with her and give her an?
We've already met with her and this will take care of what she's trying to do.
Fantastic. Any other questions for Council, or Councilman Shanks?
You're saying the code amendment will take care of what she's up to speak about?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I got one.
Matt, Councilman Wood.
I guess it's for Ken.
Mr. Gilley, can you come forward, please?
Yes.
Councilman?
What's your motion yet?
No. Let us get a motion on the floor, exactly. Let's get a motion on the floor, we'll come back to you. Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending and re-ordaining Chapter forty-one entitled "Zoning Ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia" nineteen eighty-six as amended, more specifically Article fifteen entitled "Definitions," to amend the definition of bed and breakfast and to create the definition "Distillery" and to amend Articles three K entitled "CBC, Central Business District," Section B entitled "Permitted Uses" and three L entitled "TWC, Tobacco Warehouse District," Section B entitled "Permitted Uses" to allow a distillery by right and to amend Articles three J entitled "NC, Neighborhood Commercial," Section C entitled "Special Permit Uses," three M entitled "HRC, Highway Retail Commercial," Section C entitled "Uses permitted by special use permit" and three N entitled "PSC, Plan Shopping Center Commercial," Section C entitled "Uses permitted by special use permit" to allow a distillery by special use permit.
Second by Councilman Dr. Miller. Now, open the public discussion, Mattis. Councilman Wood.
When we said the definition of bed and breakfast, have we determined what that is? So, we go from, we have one that we work under now?
Correct. In your packet, you have the definition of bed and breakfast. It says bed and breakfast lodging, that's the first paragraph, and we've added the sentence, "A bed and breakfast may include banquet event facilities for private parties and accessory use." So, by modifying that definition, it will allow these type things.
Okay, and when you create the definition of a distillery, is that, actually, we can still use it in commercial highway retail, plan shopping center?
By special use permit, correct. It'll be by right in the Central Business District and Tobacco Warehouse. If it goes into the other districts, it will require special use permit because we felt that those are kind of different areas than what we have downtown. The structures are different, so those would just require additional public hearings. Downtown and the Central Business District Tobacco Warehouse, it's similar to the uses that are already occurring down there. We felt it was appropriate just as a by right use.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Vogler?
As it pertains to the distilleries, do you happen to know, how does this definition that we're doing compare to other localities? Is this kind of more flexible for distilleries? Does it allow for larger production or less, or how do we kind of stack up to other similar localities?
You notice we didn't put a cap on the amount that is produced. Some of the other localities did. We surveyed quite a few of them. We also contacted the Virginia Alcoholic Beverage Commission to see what they had. We felt that this gave us the most flexibility with our definition, it still kept us in line with what they had.
That's good. I'd like for us to be as business friendly and flexible as possible. That's good to hear, Ken. Thank you.
Councilman Kim? I didn't get a full, clear understanding of response from Councilman Wood. Why are both these on the same section?
They're both amending the zoning code. As opposed to advertising them as two separate amendments, they're both changing the definition section of the zoning code and we've done this in the past with other definitions when we have multiple changes, so we advertise it that way. We're not changing the location bed and breakfast can go, so that's why the actual sections, the three K, the three L, those aren't being amended. Bed and breakfast are already spelled out. All we're doing is clearing up the definition of bed and breakfast.
Clearing up the definition.
And creating one for distillery, correct. We don't have one for distillery now, we're clearing up the one for bed and breakfast.
So, are we, in clearing this definition up, we are in preparation to go for what?
For the bed and breakfast, it will allow them to have things like private parties and weddings without requiring an additional special use permit.
Just to spare that.
So, we feel that that's more along the lines of what they actually are used for and will kind of save them a step of coming back through government. The distillery, we don't have a definition now, so this creates that definition and says where they can go.
Okay, all right. So, will, if they decide to open up one, then we'll come back to council?
Only if they're in the highway retail plan shopping center or neighborhood commercial district. If they're in the tobacco warehouse district or central business district, that wouldn't come to council. That would just come through the inspections Office, Community Development, to make sure the plans are okay, the fire department and everything else. It's only when they would go someplace, like if they were trying to open on Piney Forest Road or Riverside Drive or something else like that in one of these other districts, then we would have that come to council. The downtown areas would not.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. Councilman Shanks?
Yes, I just wanted to say, Mr. Gilley, I wanted to compliment you and your staff on the work you've done on both of these amendments and I'm particularly excited about the way you've worked in the distilleries and just the central business district by right. Also, from what I've seen over the years, the work that was done on the wineries and that part of the code was forward thinking and I'm glad to see that this is the same way.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah, so hypothetically, if somebody on Riverside Drive that already had a winery wanted to make a distillery there too, they'd have to come back.
If the ABC Board, it would depend really on how the ABC Board would classify them. If they would classify it as an accessory to the winery that they already have a special use permit for, then no. If they would classify it as a separate sub-business, then they would come through a special use permit process.
Thank you.
And again, that's why we worked with the ABC Board before we came up with this definition to see exactly how they would have it. The existing facility, I don't, you know, has a brewery and winery. Both of those fit under our current definition. If they added a distillery, it depends on the portion and again, how ABC would classify it. I think if they came through, there probably wouldn't be an issue, but that's why we did it. Just for new ones and other areas, they may or may not be appropriate depending. Some of the highway retail, neighborhood, commercial, planned shopping center, they're a lot more, they're adjacent to residential districts and some other things, so that's why we thought the special use permit process was more fitting.
Thank you. Mr. Gilley, I too would like to agree with Councilman Shanks. Thank you all for your due diligence. This was well worked out until you and your staff. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Any more discussion on it? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Gilstrap? Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye. Consideration of approval of an ordinance to rezone parcel ID number seven eight two nine one at four sixty-five Mount Cross Road. I open the public hearing. Please state your name, please.
Good evening. I'm Mark Johnson with L E and D Professionals, one ten Exchange Street, Danville. I'm representing the Daniel Group on this request. I would do want to thank you all for your time and your consideration for our request and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Council members? No questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Miller?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to propose an ordinance rezoning from MR, multifamily residential, to HRC, highway retail commercial, parcel ID number seven eight two nine one, otherwise known as grid oh seven oh eight, block oh oh three, parcel oh 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 eight, period, oh oh one, for the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Is there a second? Councilman Buckner? Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Consideration of approval of an ordinance vacating approximately zero point zero four acre of unimproved public alley on Lee Street. Open the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Shanks?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I move for adoption of an ordinance vacating approximately zero point oh four acre of unimproved public alley on Lee Street.
Second by Councilman Buckner. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap? Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye. Consideration of approval of a resolution approving the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen annual action plan and the budget appropriation ordinance to appropriate the funds. I open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak? I close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Shanks?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance amending the FY twenty eighteen budget appropriation ordinance for projects to be or being undertaken to improve the Danville community finance with the Community Development Plot Grant, home investment partnership funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and estimated programs income for the total appropriation of one million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand and fifty-four dollars. First reading.
I guess, second, Councilman Buckner?
We need to come back in.
Need a resolution authorizing the city manager submits with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen annual plan. If I can get a motion on that, please. Councilman Buckner?
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen annual action plan.
May I have a second, please? Councilman Shanks? Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Saunders? Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap? Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Consideration of approval of ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty eighteen budget appropriation ordinance to appropriate VDOT State of Good Repair Primary Extension Program funds in the amount of nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Campbell?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to move for adoption of Section one, Section E, one, two, three, and four.
Do we need to do them individually?
Probably need to do them individually.
Councilman Kim? Do them individually?
Okay.
Please.
Mr. Vice Mayor, move for an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget appropriation ordinance for roadway maintenance projects to be undertaken within the city and to be financed, anticipating revenues from the Virginia Department of Transportation Primary Extension Funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Could have a second, please. Councilman Buckner? First reading.
Number two, an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget appropriation ordinance for roadway maintenance projects to be undertaken within the city and to be financed, anticipating revenues from the Virginia Department of Transportation, primary extension funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
May I have a second, please? Councilman Shanks? First reading.
Three, an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget appropriation ordinance for the roadway maintenance projects to be undertaken within the city to be financed, anticipating the revenues from Virginia Department of Transportation, primary extension funds in the amount of ninety thousand dollars.
Second, please. Councilman Buckner? First reading.
An ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget appropriation ordinance for roadway maintenance projects to be undertaken within the city to be financed, anticipating revenues for the Virginia Department of Transportation, State of Good Repair, and primary extension funds in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second, please. Councilman Whittle? First reading. Consideration of approval of an ordinance amending a fiscal year twenty eighteen budget appropriation ordinance to appropriate VDOT Revenue Sharing Program Funds in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the South Boston Road Project. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilman Vogler?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty eighteen budget appropriation ordinance for projects to be undertaken within the city and to be financed, anticipating revenues from Virginia Department of Transportation, Revenue Sharing Program Funds in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. First reading.
Second, please. Councilman Shanks? First reading. Consideration of approval of an ordinance amending the budget appropriation ordinance for a challenge grant for the Virginia Commission of the Arts. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilman Vogler? Buckner, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Jones, I'd like to make a motion approving an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a Virginia Commission of the Arts Grant in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars and provide for local and share in the amount of five thousand dollars for a total grant of nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Second, please. Councilman Whittle? First reading. Communications? City Manager?
Yes, I want to commend the staff who helped organize the National Night Out event on Tuesday night. I thought it was a great event. We had several staff members from several different departments all working together to coordinate the activities. I think it was a fairly smooth night for those who participated. I'm sure we'll hear more comments from council members about their experiences on National Night Out, but it's always a great event for everyone to be able to go out to the neighborhoods and talk to folks in their neighborhoods about their issues and thank you very much, the staff, for all your effort in putting that together. Also, one of the items on the agenda tonight included about a million dollars of funds for street improvements, all with no local match. I want to commend the staff for seeking out those funds so that we can do some road improvements in our city. Thank you very much.
City Attorney?
Nothing to say to me, Mr. Mayor.
City Clerk?
I think so.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Shanks?
Yes, to follow up the city manager's comments, I too would like to thank the city staff, in particular the Danville Police Department, and even in more particular Corporal Scares for doing all the work that went into National Night Out. I thoroughly enjoyed getting out to the neighborhoods. Unfortunately, we can't make every national neighborhood or neighborhood watch area, but we did make eight or so of them and it was a good evening and that's a great program. I applaud the city staff, the police department, and Corporal Scares for all the work they've done over the years on bringing that program up to where it is now. And other than that, Mr. Vice Mayor, I have nothing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
I too want to thank everyone who was involved in National Night Out and making that happen. It was fun, as always. Had a great time and Cardinal Village was the host site this year and did a fantastic job, as always, and got a handful of us up there to dance or to try to dance. And if you hadn't had a chance to see the video on, don't put the camera on him, please. If you hadn't had a chance to see the River City TV video, it's on the Facebook page and our colleague, Councilman Buckner over there, I think he got a call from Barbara Streisand this morning for "A Star is Born." He's, he had quite the moment there, dancing or doing something that looked like dancing. So, anyway, it's a fun video. If you need a good laugh, check it out. Mark captured it quite well, so National Night Out was great, as always. You may have noticed on the front page of the newspaper today, and I'm sure Dr. Miller might make mention of it as well, so I'll be brief, but our bike share program has been up and running for about three weeks and the numbers so far have been phenomenal. They've had over four hundred and fifty individual active users, almost eight hundred rides. The average ride time's about forty-four minutes so far, which is actually a longer amount than other nearby cities, including Roanoke. And I know I've come across people who have actually come here from out of town, they're checking out our River District, saw some people from Greensboro who were in a week or so ago who wanted to come visit Ballard and some of the things in the River District. They were doing the bike share while they were here and so it's helping bring people into our city and it's also a great resource for those who live here and just want to thank everyone for working together to make that happen. It's been a great success so far. And lastly, I made mention of it in my prayer earlier, but the world and our city lost amazing person, a wonderful woman, earlier this week. My grandmother, Wanda Loveless McCubbins, passed away and laid her to rest yesterday and I just wanted to take a moment to thank, my family wants to thank everybody who has called and texted and reached out and visited and everything else. My mother especially wanted me to convey her thanks for everyone and me particularly, I want to thank my friends and colleagues on this council. I know we say a lot when we're down here that even when we disagree on specific issues down here, that at the end of it all, we're still friends and we still respect one another and we can shake hands and everything's okay. And I know some folks may not think that that's sincere, but I can tell you from the bottom of my heart that I have experienced nothing but love and compassion and friendship from my colleagues on this council and it is something that I will always remember and be thankful for. And I try to keep my comments in here about city stuff, but I just wanted to take one moment to say a few words about my grandmother because without her, I wouldn't be sitting in this seat. And so, I feel I owe it to her to just say for a moment what a person she was. She was the epitome of a selfless person and dedicated her entire life to lifting others up and to helping other people and certainly in the case of her family and me particularly... up and to helping other people, and certainly in the case of her family and me particularly. She was my biggest supporter and my biggest fan, and she was an amazing woman, the greatest person I've ever had the pleasure of knowing. If I can just be one tenth of the person that she was, I'll be one hell of a man. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. It was a wonderful National Night Out, and I think staff and everyone did a great job. One other thing was that we've got the sales tax holiday, the 4th through the 6th coming up. Friday through Sunday, you can purchase many school supplies, energy-saving appliances, and hurricane emergency equipment without paying state sales tax on it. Just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckner.
Yeah, real quickly, I just wanted you guys to know that my family and friends are praying for you guys and the loss of Grandma McCubbins. And Rhonda, we love you, and we're praying for you as well. Also, had a great time at National Night Out this year. I've had several, several phone calls and requests for me to teach people how to wobble. I really don't have time for it, but I do appreciate all the phone calls and the requests. I may set up something with a dance academy and see if I can maybe experience that. Also, I'd like to remind everybody that this Friday is the launch of the Main Line Trolley. You can catch it anywhere along the route. There's over 40 stops. There are signs posted at each individual stop that gives you the times and the locations. We've had several of them posted out on the internet. The city's website has all the information as well as to where you can catch it, but it starts 4 o'clock this Friday night, and it'll run till about 11 o'clock, I think, or 10 or 11 o'clock, and then Saturday, it runs all day. So, if you get a chance, want to experience it, it'll be a fun thing. It'll be the first Friday of every month and every Saturday of the month. Other than that, hope everybody has a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Yes, we are in contact, but we still send our regards to the loss of your grandmother. And of course, as already stated, the National Night Out was exceptional. We really enjoyed it, and also, we enjoyed the fellowship of the citizens and the community. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Gilstrap, Vice Mayor Jones.
I had the pleasure of going to this wonderful service of Miss Wanda McCubbins, and I wore my red tonight, Lee, along with you. Found out that her favorite color was red. Just want to commend you and your family. It was a wonderful home going service. You should be very proud. I heard how she campaigned for you. Now I know how you won. Just want to let the community know that we, the city council, established three strategies during our retreat, and that was reduce violent crime, education, and grow Danville. On this week, our city manager and our mayor did a superb job at the convocation for opening of our schools, at George Washington High School, and it was so amazing to see the drum line, you would have thought you were in Las Vegas, because what happened was, or New Orleans, Mr. Purvis and his drum line came out, and it was one of the best convocations that I've been to in a long time. I mentioned earlier about our three strategies because the mayor and the city manager spoke about education and how we're in it together. Just want everybody to know what this council has done for education. A lot of times, people say, what are you all doing? This council increased additional funding for our school systems, which is what our second priority was education. So, to all of our teachers and our staff members, administrators, and school board members, and just the entire district, council is with you as the city manager and the mayor said. We pray that we have a fantastic school year. They had two open houses today at our middle schools and the elementary schools. They have an open house on tomorrow. So, to all our kids, please pray for our kids, pray for our teachers. We have new administrators in our community, and if you haven't had a chance to go by to visit the schools, you'd be very impressed. So, we support you, Danville Public Schools tremendously. And Ken, I just want to say what a superb job, how you and the mayor spoke about, we're all in this together. And lastly, you've heard about it, the National Night Out was again a huge success, and Councilman Buckner and Vogler and Dr. Miller, and since Mayor Gilstrap is out of town, Councilor Buckner mentioned it, that tomorrow at 4 o'clock, we will be at Blue Park loading the trolley. He and both Councilman Vogler and Dr. Miller are going to be giving classes before we get on the trolley. But again, to all the council members, thank you for supporting me tonight in my first time in this seat. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Miller.
Well, I want to thank the Vice Mayor. You did a great job tonight getting us through this.
Thank you.
Wonderful job. And Councilman Vogler, our condolences. You know, everybody, of course, loves your mother, but few people are dear to us as our grandmother. They're just, grandmothers are special. I feel your pain. National Night Out, great event. That's the highlight of the council year, in my opinion. We had more fun that night than any other night in the year, so it lived up to expectations this year, and I want to thank all the staff and the police department and everybody and the communities that worked so hard to set that up for us. The bike share, as Councilman Vogler said, success already, over 800 riders. It's really going great guns. The, it's, somebody in the paper day, they laid a compliment on those nice baskets in the front. Well, you can have your company's name and logo on one of those nice baskets. So, Codtech Parks and Rec, Bill Serenga, we need some more sponsors. You know, the first hour is free, so we need to help pay for the program and keep it going. I've had several of my medical residents who live down in the River District say they'd already gone out and ridden the bicycles up and down the trail, and you know, it's a lot more convenient to just go out and rent a bicycle, ride on it, ride the trail, and come back and leave it. So, it's a great success, but we do need more sponsors. Thank you.
On that note, we would like to thank all of you for joining us tonight and being here, leading the journey.